All our visitors here tonight. First thing on the items, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Glover to read our prayer list and lead us in prayer.
Our prayer request, some of them include Ms. Linda Brim, which is Ms. Bonnie Grandstaff's mother, Barry Smith's father, Deanna Shoulders, Fay Crawford's mother-in-law is sick, Ms. Jericho's father, Rachel Kelly's stepdad, Howard Bailey passed away, Kelly Goodman's mother passed away, Mark Jones' mother and father, Mr. Danny Clare, Mr. Scott Bennett, which is a teacher over at Owens Well Mentored, and the student's family that passed in a car crash. Those are some of the others. Are there any others?
Mother, please.
Let's pray for his mother. If we all go to prayer, please. Dear Father, thank you again for a wonderful blessed day. Be with us today, dear Father, as we make the best decisions for our children and the people of our county. Be with those that we have spoken about, dear Father, that you may heal them and keep them in your prayers, dear Father. Most importantly, dear Father, I want to thank you for letting your son don across for our sins. In your heavenly name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna take this time slow, Mr. Tracey said I need to. I got too fast on emergency can handle. Put all this in your computer that quick, so I'll slow down a little bit. But if I get too fast, where do you bother? Okay, first thing on the is our consent items. I hope you've all had a chance to look at those. Do you have motion to approve those?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on any of... If not, I'm gonna go into all in favor. Aye, aye, aye. Post.
We're not voting on the computer?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm gonna do that. That kind of slows me down a little bit and helps her get... Okay, superintendent actions. Again, I hope you've had a chance to look at all of those. Anything y'all want to discuss on those? For the info. Everybody okay with that? All right, let's go to new business. First thing on there is the Smith County High School requests permission to name the auditorium the Bill K. Greath Memorial Auditorium. Do I have a motion on that?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Lewis, Mr. Apple. Any discussion on? All in favor? Aye. Post. Request to approve the lowest bid on the mixed dollar of seventy-five hundred gallons of diesel. The lowest bid was three point four one nine. Do I have a motion, motion?
Second.
Discussion? Yeah.
Just right quick.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith, we staying within budget on fuel so far?
Right now, we're well within. I can give you a...
I just want to make sure we're staying within.
...more detailed to work that for.
Okay, this is, I know we got a low bid on this. Let's do a roll call vote on this one because this is money. And I had a motion and second, so Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McCale?
Yes.
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 Myself, yes. And y'all's provision does tonight, this is a new thing that we're doing. This gives y'all all a chance to look as well as the public that's logged in watching the meeting tonight, lets know how everyone votes. And it is a, just feel something different and it just takes a while to get going with it, so.
That fuel's done been delivered though, Mr. Shoulders?
It's January.
It's Jan-, yeah, on Thursday, January the twenty-sixth is when it will be delivered. Which is twenty-first, so it's not here yet.
It says on mine, delivered on January twenty-sixth.
Okay, deliver, excuse me, I said January the twenty-sixth. Excuse me, it is. It's already been delivered.
Okay, so it's after the fact we're approving it though, right?
We always do it that way. It's always done that way.
Do we?
Yes.
So I just not be nothing, but if somebody opposed it, if we unanimously opposed it, what would happen?
Uh, still be majority.
Now, if everybody here voted no against it, how would that fall?
I guess.
I don't think nobody would oppose the lowest bid.
No.
Good.
But what if they did?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Smith, I'd get you a check.
That's the first time I ever noticed it, honestly.
We keep a reserve of it up to the last four or six weeks, so it probably gets you through the next month till you have another special call.
Right. All right.
Okay, items C, S R two point O and S R three point O application. Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lewis? Second. Glover? Any discussion on this one? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Post?
We'll have to roll call that one.
Probably should have.
You think so?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
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 Yes. A request to apply for E-Rate funding for twenty-three, twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
Some would.
Apple? I'll second.
I'll second.
Tommy, 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 be. Any discussion on?
Bring, bring me up speed on that, Mr. Chairman. I don't, I can't see that real good on mine.
Okay.
For some reason, I can't, it's really small, but just won't explain what this is.
Let me get over here to it and I'll read it to you. It's E-Rate funding, Ms. Norman, you want, you want a twenty?
Um, it pays eighty percent of our internet, and I don't have the figures in front of me. I'm sorry, I didn't have that sheet of paper, but we have to have the internet for the schools, and it also pays eighty percent of the maintenance agreement. That helps with the technologies, maintenance. I'm not, Bonnie might have to speak a little bit more on that, but it's basically, the eighty percent is free money, if you allow me to apply for it, and then the other twenty percent the board has to pay. But we're gonna have to have internet anyhow, so do you wanna pay for a hundred percent of it or twenty percent of it?
So we're asking you're, you're gonna apply for that, right?
Yes, I have to apply for that by March twenty-eighth.
Mr. McCale, we got it now seven years in order.
Oh, yeah, since two thousand fifteen or sixteen, we've done this, I think.
So our part is twenty percent?
Uh-huh, if I apply for the funding, but I gotta apply for the funding for it could be twenty percent.
And we'll pay the difference of fifty-four thousand?
Yes.
If we didn't, we'd just be paying it all.
Paying it all.
Ms. Norman, thank you for doing such a good job all the time for us.
You're welcome. Mr. Wilson started all this, and I'm just following up, so.
You done an exceptional job before you came here.
Any more discussion on? Okay, this is money again, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes, Mr. Smith. Policy of them on tobacco-free schools. If I had a chance to look at that one, do I have a motion?
Motion, but I mean, I want to discuss.
Okay, okay, yeah. Mr. Glover? Second?
Second.
Now, now, Mr. Glover, whatever discussion.
I was looking at the, the proposed change to the tobacco-free schools, and I really think, I mean, what is our policy for tobacco right now? What is the suspension policy for that?
It's most consistent with the five days.
The five days?
Either in school or, and a lot of it depends on kind of the age, but you know.
Does that matter how many times they get caught it?
Yeah, progressively, you know, I don't have everybody, but it goes into, most of the time, it's been incurred pretty good after the first or second offense, but it kind of gives flexibility that Jamie, you've been on the situation a number of times. It's not really, Mr. Glover, concrete, it's just kind of what we stay consistent with the principles.
There's a lot of discretion in it based on history, if there are prior violations of anything like that, so it's, it's probably a category two or three at this point. I don't know if Dr. McCale.
What I, what I would like to see, I would like to see, I mean, across the board for tobacco, vaping, and alcohol, because right now our alcohol is, is, kids can show up alcohol and just get some for a couple of days. And I don't feel as if that's fair, when somebody can just make a threat that they're gonna kick somebody's hind end and be sent home for three sixty-five. I think that's part of the policy that we need to add in on that.
Under, do you add tobacco under alcohol? We already have a policy related to tobacco, sir, I mean alcohol.
I think they all need to be the same, is what I'm saying. Our alcohol, our tobacco, and, and our drugs all need to be the same.
Any, be the same?
Well, I, I actually spoke with the T S B A, tried them last week and got in touch today, and Ben Torres, who's, who's an attorney with them, and who's actually gonna be doing your retreat in March, and we, we discussed these issues. T S B A is very hesitant to recommend that the board add anything to zero tolerance that's not in the statute. I'd be remiss not to tell you that, but for a board to add an additional, what effectively is a zero tolerance to, to what's not in the statute, which is possession of drugs, possession of a weapon, and then an assault and bodily injury, right now is the automatic three sixty-five without any discretion.
Alcohol is not an automatic three sixty-five?
It's not by law, it's not. It's not to say you couldn't, but again, they were very cautious. He also offered, as part of that retreat, to go through those and possibly develop a policy with, at that retreat. If they were interested in doing that, I told him I would certainly mention that, but, but no, sir, alcohol and tobacco right now are separate apart, and you know, any, what you're doing is taking government action, and we have to be real careful that it's gotta be proportional to the issues that we're, we're seeing, and you, you can't, you know, impose a fifty thousand dollar fine for parking ticket. It's gotta be proportional and reasonable, where if it's ever challenged, we have a rough hill to climb.
What would be the harm in changing this from a tobacco-free school policy to an alcohol and tobacco-free school policy?
Nothing at all. The tobacco-free school policy comes from the T S B A, and that's just another one of their provisions, but there's certainly nothing wrong. I mean, it's already alcohol, but the punishment is what it is.
I'd like to add too, I think, some of you asked a question, I think would help. If, I've already checked on the tests are ready available, I think you'd mentioned them to me, in the meantime, I talked to our drug testing company. We could also add to this, whatever decision is tonight to do with vapes or smoking, they could automatically be given part of our policy. They could test as an indicator, and at that point, if it showed a foreign substance that was great, then you would still fall back under the zero tolerance. You'd still be getting that too, because it indicated in that, that actual device that would have drugs or something with it and alcohol, and then what you look at from another level.
Mr. Lewis?
I just have a question, and I may be the only board member feels this way, and if so, that's all right. I see, I understand what you're talking about, Mr. Glover, but for the sake of continuity with things, we're talking about integrating two independent policies here, I think, sort of, but the only thing we've got on here is to talk about the tobacco-free policy. Maybe we should take up the other one. We've got a full day meeting coming up. Mr. Torres gonna be here to talk to us about state statute and things. Maybe we should take up the other one at that time, or that's just my thinking on it. I don't, I don't go, I don't go over beyond anything in state law, and they'd have a right to appeal on that. If we're stepping outside what state law allows, we're gonna lose that appeal, and there you are, so. Maybe we need to be a little better educated with that before we make a decision.
And, and the board's primary concern, and what the juvenile court's saying, concern the vapes, and that was kind of the starting point. And if, the reason it found, came under tobacco-free schools is that the one that I found where he talked about vaping to start with. So we added that as a, that paragraph, Ms. Tracey and I, as an additional option to give the board some consideration on it. There was nothing magical about that particular part of the policy, other than that's where vaping was mentioned prior to any change to it. So that seemed the most logical place to, to put it in there, and again, if a student has a vape, and there's a substance in that vape, and that vape was tested as an illegal substance, a drug, that's a three sixty-five still. That's your zero tolerance, but that won't change that. What you're talking about is just the mere possession of, I guess they call them a pen, a vape pen, is that right? Is the possession of the pen itself, whether it be empty or have tobacco in it or have something else. I don't know what argument to put in it, but I think just about it. So that, that's the difference in the two. If the vape's got the drugs in it, it's still under your three sixty-five zero tolerance. If it's got some other substance, that's what the board wanted to consider, we thought, going forward.
Well, yeah.
So are we setting a new policy tonight, Mr. Shoulders?
The, we're just, the policy, it's just, we're amending that with what we're doing.
That's what we're doing, amended it?
Yeah.
But yes, you are, I mean, that's.
Yeah, it's actually, if you wanna call it, but it's actually just being amended to what we already got.
So what, the guidelines for the days of suspension is? Just bring me up to speed there. I'm not sure, my father, if they're gonna be more severe, I mean.
It was our understanding that's what the board wanted to consider, is to possibly set some more, more strict days related to the vaping itself. Now, if the board wants to consider the alcohol and the tobacco and other such things on a more strict level, then I probably would. You know, that may require some further discussion, and maybe something you could do at your retreat coming up.
So when will we be adding to the, Mr. Director, when will we be adding those days of suspension or?
Well, it would been on, what you as a board choose to do here, and also we'd have to do, it would need to have an educational period. You know, you weren't gonna start in the morning, but we'd wanna start in the center, we felt like we got a chance to ever. I wouldn't want every student to sign off on it, say that they got aware, that way they couldn't come up and say they didn't know.
So we, I mean, if, the best case scenario, when would we have this in effect?
Well, I would like to see if we, to, I'd like to see it start next year, but I don't think we're even waiting to get it started, but there is such a need for it.
Yeah.
So I think you'd have it up in a couple of weeks, and it feel like we gotta educate. I don't, I would have to get some people come in and talk, some speakers, and then maybe much the sheriff's department, the judge, possibly come in, let them see how serious it is.
The way I'm reading this, this policy though, is, is, we're picking the days for the, for the vaping, but the tobacco is still left up to the member.
That's true.
I think what Mr. Shoulders, I said, we're doing it, but it's not showing, but it needs to, it would help the principals and everybody to have a consistent policy across the board.
For tobacco.
X number of days, first offense, X number of days, then there's no question.
Correct.
I think they are doing that, but maybe it's not, it's trying to explain a little less to the public, and then they'll say, hey, go pick the book up and say, hey.
So when would it, when would parents be able to say, hey, if your kid's in school and he has a problem, and we're enforcing it without them being aware that that kid can be suspended for sixty days?
Well, see, what he said, and I, I'd really go along with that a hundred percent, is how each person sign off on it.
What, now who, what are you making about who, what's the, who's?
Students.
Oh.
Sign off on this.
And we'd wanna run some spots, we'd want, we'd want to post with the doors, we'd probably run some stuff on the radio. I mean, we'd want them to understand our, our commitment to stopping this if we decide, you know, as a group, that we're trying to help. But we also need to educate, I'm not sure as a student, a lot of times they understand the dangers of what's in those, because there's not, there's not a lot of regulations. Depending on what store you go to, basically, there's not very much regulations of what's in those vapes.
And just like last week, there was three students in Nashville that died on, or didn't die, but overdose from a vaping pin. And was sent to the hospital.
He was spent on it, yeah, what?
I don't know exactly what was in it, but I know they were, they, they fell out on the floor, and they were rushed to the hospital, and that was in.
And, and with?
It's, it's in their state.
Right.
We got to do something.
And they were just bought over the counter, I think, too, weren't they?
And if they were collating to this, then you got this paper, says, you read this, you signed this.
And we found them in our, we found kids in our school system right now as young as nine-year-old with vapes.
I mean, really, I mean.
But Winkler that pretty well handled when you got it signed.
That would, that would go a long way on a due process on.
Yes, for sure.
It's just nice to say that they got the information or educated on it.
And Mr. McCale, you could always, whoever, I think Mr. Glover made a motion, but you could always put in a motion, an effective date as to when the policy would become effective, to give you a cushion for education, to give everybody education on it, to.
So this in realistic terms, Director, I think you could answer this, but anybody, in realistic terms, if we voted tonight, which we will, but, and it was approved, how quick could we get this? I mean, 'cause you know, sometimes, I mean, we don't want to have a statistic in our county with a.
But I do think you've gotta give, you know, we need to do it quick as we can, but I think you've also gotta give enough time to feel like, realistically, they're educated. I mean, I don't think we need to stretch it out, but I think by the time we come back after spring break, we'd like to get some, probably a realistic. But you think, Jamie, it'd be, that we gotta give enough time to educate. And then we'd send on what y'all want to do as a group, to make sure they understand what the punishment is, take that.
Mr. Lewis?
Let's, let's slow down just a minute, now, if, Mr. Winkler, you correct me if I misspeak somewhere, because I'm very capable of doing that. My understanding of what we're, the reason it's on the agenda tonight is because there was discussion about amendment policy to include vapes or vape products or et cetera.
Yes, sir.
And we haven't done anything yet. This is, we're considering an amendment
Yes, sir.
along with consideration of what the punishment would be. We're nowhere near ready to vote on anything. We hadn't discussed this thing yet. We, this is just kind of a draft policy. We hadn't decided anything yet, it's just on the agenda to try to create.
It is, but it is a new, new business item that could be voted on if the board chose.
But, but I mean, there needs to be discussion about what's on there.
What you're doing now.
Needs to be a decision, are we gonna do it? If we're gonna do it, what's punishment gonna be? How's it gonna progress and all that? We're, we're nowhere near ready to vote, just a lot of talking to go on there first.
Uh, but you certainly can't.
Yes, sir.
If that's what you choose to, but it was our understanding the board wanted something to consider.
Right. And that's a good draft?
My only concern about the draft is, like I said, that the vapes and tobacco are separate on this draft, I feel. There's a punishment specific for vapes and not for tobacco.
Well, there's not a punishment specific for, but we don't have a set number of, you know, it says shall require suspension of blank, the first offense and blank for, we don't, so we don't really have a.
We don't have, but yeah, but that's what we're on the agenda to discuss.
Yes, sir, but again, go back, we wanna make sure the concern, and then you gotta be proportional, and you gotta be reasonable in laws that you pass.
Correct.
And the concern was the increase in the prevalence of the vapes, and that's not necessarily the tobacco, not that they're not there, not that it's not a problem, but that's why it was just focused on vapes, is because that was the focus of the discussion.
But you also gotta, you also gotta keep in mind, when we're talking about this, if we're talking about drugs or anything like that, that falls over a different policy. It don't follow the this policy.
Absolutely.
It follows under the zero tolerance policy.
Right.
So also keep that in mind when we're talking about this.
And that's why we included that one sentence, that drugs still fall under the zero tolerance by statute.
And also, depending on what, what you guys as a group, anything over ten days, whether it be alternative school, suspension, it would still be on a case by case, if a parent chose to do so, they go in front of the discipline hearing. In other words, if it was proved it was stuck in somebody's backpack and they'd never done it, it could come in front of the discipline hearing. They'd make a recommendation, it would come in front of me, it could be modified on a case by case, if it's ten days or more.
How quick does that happen? Let's say you put cousin Johnny today, how quick can they get from the board?
Usually they can be another thing, a day or two. Most of the time, we very rarely go more than two or three days, you only actual school days.
I think they have five days to appeal it.
They got five days to appeal it, but we're generally, Jamie, way ahead of that.
They are, it's usually.
And answer you too, Mr. McCale, if we would start educating, if y'all pass something different, we've got a principals meeting Thursday, we would probably be pretty in debt with our principals to start the plan that morning on how they would take it back to their schools after Thursday.
Any more questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Lewis.
Last line. Everybody, follow with me. Possession of vaping device shall require a suspension, suspension, not alternative school, not anything, suspension is what we're talking about.
Well, the Director, if it's appealed, and this is, I talked, the T S B A reminded me of this today. The state law allows your Director the option to modify. We can't take that away. The board can't take that away by law from the Director, so.
So he can modify suspension into something else?
Well, alternatives, yes.
So if, let me give you a scenario. I'll give you one, concerns made. Let's say we have three people in a room. Or students, whatever you wanna call it. M, M one's a smoker, M one, Jews, and, you know, they have a vape to pass around, and this one over here's never done anything. They're just friends with these people. What is that? Well, it's vape, well, what's it do? It does this, here, you wanna try it, and then somebody walks in, it's the first time I've ever picked it up and get caught with it, and they're suspended right then, right there.
Yes, sir. Vape policy, yes, sir.
But my main concern is, is what happens whenever he picks that pin up, takes a hit off of it, and then dies from a fentanyl overdose. Whether it's his first, it's his last.
I'm not, I'm not detracting from that. I deal with it every day, just like you do, got three thousand on the grant. But I'm just saying, suspension, just because the first time they've had it in their hand, but you've got the right to override that if they appeal it, correct, Mr. Director?
Say it again, I said.
Suspension first time, because they've had it in their hand, but you've got the right to override that if they appeal it?
If he's got the right to modify it for ten days.
Modify it.
Not a fact. They'd still have the right to come back, and it could be adjusted to whatever the situation.
It's under ten days, you can't modify it, correct?
So could we require the Director, if he over, if he overread the policy here, that he have to come back to us at the next board meeting in a private session, of course, and explain to us why Billy got a free pass and Tommy didn't, because?
Be hard to do that, because you got the clock, the clock's ticking.
Oh, is that what it is?
That, and the law allows him the discretion to do that. I don't know that there's.
Really?
I don't know what you could do to override that. You couldn't override it otherwise, because it doesn't give the board that discretion.
He wouldn't have to explain to us why he did that.
Well, I, I think you could certainly inquire.
Transparency, I'm just saying.
Yes, sir.
Could they come? I guess his question would be, could they come and ask on one or more?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is generalization, how was Johnny got?
I, I think, I'm just speaking for myself. I might have said this at the last board meeting. I, I have a heartburn putting over ten days on this first offense. I have a heartburn for, just so what, somebody did get innocent on this. I'd hate for somebody to be suspended for thirty days the first time out. You get somebody for thirty days, most time they fail the school year. Fifth first of school year, and you get caught with a vape in your hand, and you're thirty days, and you're pulled to thirty days. I'm smoking. Most likely, you failed that school year, and that ain't what we're about. I think if we look at a policy, we ought to look at the first offense, needs to be under ten days. Now, the second offense, if you wanna throw it at them, throw a thirty day on them, I don't care, but I can't say the first offense for vaping, smoking, whatever, over a ten days, first time.
I'm, I'm not trying to flavor your own with other, I'm just. I'm, I'm not trying to flavor y'all on what other, I'm just giving you information, okay? Keep in mind now, an alternative, um, punishment, they won't, they won't, they shouldn't get behind, whatever the days are, they should be, you know, keep up their schoolwork and everything in the alternative setting, so just make sure you understand the difference between a ten days in alternative school versus ten days out of school, ten days out of school, they can't make it up, ten days alternative, they're getting their work and rolling right on.
And that's where you've got within two days to decide alternative or ten day suspension, correct?
Well, depending on what they chose as policy, correct, they could choose the policy as a thirty day alternative, a ten day, a five day, or, or you could go with thirty day suspension, but anything over ten days in either one of them, the parents or the, in some cases now, there, we have eighteen-year-olds that are juniors or seniors in high school, they're, they're adults, they would have the right to appeal that to the discipline hearing board, that doesn't mean it be modified, they just have the right to do that.
One thing that was also mentioned was, and that hadn't crossed my mind, is the board could also suspend from extracurricular activities, obviously if they're out of school, they wouldn't be doing that anyway, but that could even be more if they were in school, you could, you could add on.
Well, the alternative too, there's supposed to not be any extracurricular activities.
But even beyond that, you could, you know, say a student was out for five days, but out for sixty days on extracurricular, so they're out of sports.
So if the kids in alternative school, they're not supposed to do all that?
They're not supposed to be. I'm not saying they don't get by, as, as much events we got, but if they're recognized, they're, they're told not to, there's not supposed to be any school events.
Have we done any campaigning yet, or awareness in the halls, or anything yet?
Anything, no, no.
Not yet. Are we gonna try it in the elementary or middle schools?
Well, like, we got, like Randy said, we had a, we took, we took a vape last week out of the nine-year-old.
Wow.
Uh, it's, we know we've got it, so I think we've got to start educating regardless of what we do here, we've got to do their job of educating their, their children, you know what I mean, of the.
Well, this for instance, and I'm just not trying to make a point at all, but what happened to that kid, are you, are you at liberty to say what happened to that?
It's, it's right now being, it's in the court system and, and.
Is it?
Yeah.
He's not, he can't tell.
Yeah.
It's in the court system, he can't.
Well, are they allowed to come to school still?
He can't tell.
He can't tell you that.
He can't tell you that.
Confidential.
So who, all right, well, who knows, I'm just, without making a point, who knows?
Well, your administrators know, he knows.
Okay.
It's just, it can't be discussed.
It's been consistently, Mr. McCadaver, across the board, and pretty much for every age group, it's the same.
Okay.
And you're the only one, I mean, you ain't discussed it, but, I mean, it's strictly been, I, I don't know.
Other principals have made sure he or she, they were all doing exactly the same thing.
Okay.
I was pulling back a comment real fast, I'll get to something on JS because since we had this at the last meeting, you know, there was talk about level of, of suspension, this, that, and the other, and, I mean, I've, I've had some conversations, um, with people in the community and the school system, and I, and I know that we have a problem with narcotics and everything else, um, disguised in vapes and all this stuff, and I, I mean, I see it every day, still myself, um, in my role, but I, I will have to admit on you, um, I cannot in good conscience, after talking to people and praying about it a lot, I can't in good conscience vote for a thirty day suspension right off the bat and battle child first time right off, obviously you can't do, I, I, I'm just like a veteran, I'll, I'll talk to people and pray about it as hard as I can, and I don't want to, is it a mistake for them to have it, absolutely, could you kill them first time you use it, yes you can, that's a proven thing, but also believe that there should be some compassion as well and not the hammer every time, there's time and place for everybody, and I, I just can't give a thirty day suspension and, and have a child fail, I, I can't, I, I, I'm not going to.
Mr. Lewis, can I add something to that?
Yes, sir, you can, I'm, if you're scared for me to finish first, I'll let you talk all you want to, but my conscience will not let me fail a child first offense, first problem that we've had with them, I just can't, just can't do, for me, anybody else will do it if they want to, and, and I'm not saying that's wrong, I'm just saying for me, I cannot do that.
Can, can I add to that?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we're not failing anybody, we're not thirty days suspension, they have the process for appeal over thir, over ten days, correct, so they could appeal that, they could go to alternative school, so we're not failing anybody for thirty days, that thirty days could go to thirty days alternative school if it's available.
Could unless that appeal is not appealed, if they win the appeal, they don't go to any alternative school, they're right back in there again, or what if he denies that, he has a right to do that, we still, we fail that child.
We didn't fail that child, that child.
Well, we set policy, we're his boss and he's the instrument of our policy, so we fail that child.
With Jamie, if that's something that they wanted to look at as a board on the first offense, we'd be better off to say that as a thirty, or whatever day, I don't know the reason why thirty or ten or five, that's their choice, but wouldn't we be better off to set the first time as an alternative school offense?
You could.
And then they would still come to me for the appeal over ten, and they're not, anybody gonna fail that first time regardless for alternative school.
What if we overflow our alternative school?
And Mr. McCadaver, the only downside of that is that.
And at that point, we're gonna have to start looking at suspension.
That takes away your discretion the other way, if that's a student that's had a strong disciplinary record, or weak disciplinary record to start with.
Exactly.
You, or has failed in the alternative school before, you may not want to put them back in there, and that kind of takes away your discretion of going the other way.
But I just don't want to be cut and dried hard and pass, hey, I'm sorry, you, you're a straight A student, but here you are, a day with this, and you're out here, thirty days gone, and I'm sorry you're gonna fail, blah, blah, I can't.
And I think a lot of reasons, Jamie, that, that even on the suspension, until the alternative school gets full and we don't have a place, but we're supposed to put them there, so it would be on the appeals process or until it got full, and then it had to be consideration, hopefully with suspension.
Space of availability is consideration, too.
When, if, if the alternative school become full, with some sort of, uh, uh, at home?
No.
Available at home, uh, virtual?
No, sir.
Is that not available?
Y'all don't have a virtual school at this point, homebound is only for medical issues, and I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think you could do that.
I thought I had read that somewhere, so I, I.
Yep.
Well.
You couldn't call it an alternative school, if you had a virtual option, you'd have a virtual option, but you couldn't do that for alternative.
Yeah.
Okay, just, I'm just throwing this out here, try to get something worked out here for everybody, first offense, ten days, second day, uh, second offense, thirty days, now, on ten days, Jamie.
Yes, sir.
There's no appeal, correct?
Anything over ten days.
Ten days, it wouldn't be.
But ten days, they, there's nothing to be, no, in other words.
I think the, I think the policy is greater than ten days, yes, sir.
Greater than ten days.
What if we did fifteen? Fifteen, thirty, graduate, four.
I think he has reason for doing that, and I may be wrong, I don't want, it's because that does predict a student to appeal it.
Correct.
Versus if you go.
That protects his rights to appeal, and he may want to go to alternative.
I, I, I'm like Mr. Lewis now, I don't want to, I don't want to be the one, because you know as well as I do, you get a, a seventeen-year-old, and again, I don't want to see anybody die, but you get a seventeen-year-old, and we nail him the first time with a bunch of days, he just gonna drop out quick and go, and then go back to the GED, and that's.
But, but again, I think the difference, I want to make sure the board, now, again, I'm not trying to talk y'all on what other, because I'm a reforcer, okay, but, but an alternative school, shouldn't anybody fail going to alternative school, actually, see the grades go up in there because that's all they got to do, okay, so just keep that in mind versus a suspension, make sure you know the difference of what you're.
Right, but, but, but with, and I'm, in other words, alternative is just like, you know, clock still ticking, they going to school and blah this.
They're, they're all the works sitting down there with certified teachers.
Correct, but, again, the question is, and this has been brought up, what do you comfortably can carry down there at one time, head count?
Probably twelve, fifteen would be a big number.
Okay, we got other things going on besides this that gets in alternative school, we gonna get to a point there, if you catch four, five and put them in altern, alternative, and then you've already got others that are in alternative for other things.
Can't manage.
We can't manage, it, we, we got a problem.
We usually run five, eight, and I'll think, you know, just.
Right, five, eight, but you never know what type of scenario would come up and get us over the number there.
Mr. Turney?
Yes.
Just so that my slow-minded self is on page with you, ten days is ten days period, no appellate rights, correct?
Yes, sir.
Anything beyond ten days gives them due process rights to appeal, correct?
Yes, sir.
So eleven days.
I, I was, they could, they appeal first to the Student Disciplinary Hearing Authority that you appoint the members to at the beginning of every school year, your policy reads, uh, we'll conduct hearings for students who have been suspended, expelled, remanded for more than ten school days.
So eleven days would allow them that process.
Eleven, yes, sir.
Now, if they had a second offense, then obviously we'd probably have a problem.
The second offense would be more than ten days.
Well, I mean, but, well, second, second offense is, is a patternistic behavior, it's, you know what I mean?
Well, I'm saying, ten days first time, thir, thirty days the second time, because.
How about eleven days first time, so they got a right to due process and appeal because of ten days, they don't have that right.
But they're just gonna, but they're just gonna serve eleven days, correct?
Eleven days would be the max they would serve, if that's what you gave them on first offense.
But they get, but they get a right to.
But I think what Mr. Glover said, they would go, that gives them a right to appeal, at ten, they can't appeal.
Ten days and eleven.
Yeah.
And ten days, they're stuck with ten days.
Well, that's ours, that's out of this hearing and out of the.
But eleven days, they can come in on day two and appeal, correct?
Yep, well, they got five days, and most time we try, we try to encourage them to go that day.
Right.
We usually are not over one to two days of getting here and.
Okay, well, let's look at eleven days first offense and then thirty, I mean, if they don't learn on this first offense, thirty days on this second.
How far you gonna space out the first and second offense, a year, two years, three years?
Current.
What'd he say?
How you will space out the?
What we've done in the past, we start with a clean slate for the next year.
And learn nothing back to back.
Each year you start with a clean slate.
If he's in, if he's sophomore to, then it's junior.
Okay, he said start each year with a clean slate.
We have in the past, David, we started.
Each year.
Yeah, each year is a clean slate, they can get start all over again.
So if they, if they get the first one in May, and then the second school year starts in.
But that's something we could do, I think that does need to be addressed, it meant the severity of what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I just.
I think we need to go from, you know, between first offense, second offense, at least make it two years, make a two-year difference there, that way, if somebody does change their life and they do better, that gives them the opportunity to show us, but, uh, within a two-year period, if they've done it twice, if they've been caught twice, they have a chance.
Are you saying, Randy, two school years or a calendar, two, calendar, two school years, I mean, two calendar years, like, or we're siding in May?
Either or, so, I mean, ju, uh, just an amount of time, a lengthy enough amount of time to show that there's not a pattern.
But what he's saying though is, if they get caught in March.
Mm-hmm.
Do you give them till next, the following March, or do you start it all over in August?
I think we should do two Marches.
Two calendar years.
Two calendar years.
He done it.
From the first offense.
Is, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Um, now, you say the severity of the problem here a lot more than I do, is the severity of the problem as such that we need, that it needs to be addressed before two years?
Absolutely.
Okay, then, my thought would be this, school year to school year, or calendar year, whatever you want to do, but a school year to school year might make more sense, um, because the severity is there, I think the intent that Mr. Glover and board has is for us to, we're not gonna eliminate it, fellas, they might as well face that, it's just like anybody wants to drink moonshine, they gonna find it, they gonna drink, not gonna eliminate it, now, maybe we can rein it in some, but I think that, that the thought process in their mind of getting caught again after a two-year period of time would diminish the, the severity of the punishment to them in their mind, so like, if we had eleven days the first time, which gives them a right to appeal, and I'm sorry, I mean, I'm just big on due process, but every person I've arrested from homicide to bank robbery, they got a right to due process, so I think every single person in this country has a right to due process, that's all, so that's why I say eleven days, then if they get caught again on that second time within that school year, you said thirty days, let it rip.
What happens on the third?
I mean, we're gonna have to rein it in somehow, two years, I'm afraid that, that with the level that you're talking about, the severity, and you, you spoke last time about how the court, courts were all around with it, I mean, we're gonna have to do something to get it into control, or, I just want to ensure that everybody's getting the equal rights and due process, so, I, I mean, why would we, why would we give a guy or a girl that's, who have eleven days in a school year, and then if they get caught again or something that we're gonna wait two, I think go running school year to school year.
No, he's talking about, like, they say, Johnny got caught, they got the name, okay?
Let it stretch out to thirty years, they would apply for two years.
Then Johnny got caught, then Johnny got caught, a year, four months late.
That's the other thirty days, so you're, what you're saying is, let the thirty day punishment stretch out the length of two years, so we're basically like a two-year probation.
Probation, I think. It's like, he's talking about like a statute limitation.
Yeah, okay, okay.
One to.
I'll go along with that.
There is one other thing we need to discuss here too, is, Mr. Glover brought that up with third offense, should we do that to give the director the option to deal with it as he sees, on the third offense, whether to complete expulsion?
I think third things, they'll be expelled for a rest school year.
I mean, sure it happens, so.
Well, now, he said.
It's gonna happen by that.
I see it in court, all the times, it's gonna happen.
Same, we're seeing, I don't know what you're saying, I mean, it shouldn't be the same people, because our SROs are working, but you're seeing the same people do it over, over, more than you're seeing, I guess, new people, of course.
They waited out pretty quick, man.
Yeah, thank you, well, I think it's really alternative, they were catching sleep.
Then, then you've got another thing here, you got the person vaping, then you got the person selling.
That's, now, that's a criminal offense, if they're selling to minors, problem is, you gotta prove that, and that's done with through our SROs, and, but if it's minor, something's minor, it's still a criminal, if we don't have an offense, then.
But that's two separate issues, they're gonna deal with, but do we want to follow, would that fall under on a case by case, or do we need to have somebody in there that's a special, if I'm a dealer, basically a dealer, that's what we're seeing, and we're seeing now, it coming from one or two sources within each building.
I, I think you gotta deal with possession of it in their hands.
And then do it on a case by case.
Property, and then the case by case, tracing it back.
Okay.
I don't, if there's any way you can.
And they'll deal with it, it's court system, on a criminal.
Criminal, yeah, okay, now, we've got a motion in a second, do we need to vote on this, then come back and vote on the days?
You can either do it that way, or, or it could be amended from the start.
Well, I'm not already done talking.
Okay, go ahead, you.
I, I ain't clear on the year or school year, why don't, why don't we just make it a three sixty-five, first offense, I get caught today, I got a three sixty-five, get that off of, if I get caught then a three sixty-five from a day, I go to the second offense, second offense be a three sixty-five, instead of going to school year to school year, or two year to two year, why don't you just make it a simple three sixty-five, every day you get caught on, you gotta, and you're not get caught again, or change stuff up.
Well, I think.
It gives you, it gives you an easy out next year, gives you an easy out, if I get Gives you an easy out. If I get caught, I'm just gonna do eleven days.
Yeah, but we're talking about school year to school year.
No, we're talking about.
During March, then you can go ahead there again.
No, we're talking about two years.
The word's holding them on like probation for two years instead of three sixty-five.
Twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-six. Do it again, play that time.
So if they come in there, just like what you say a freshman comes in there and he gets caught, the first ten days of high school, okay? This, when he becomes a junior, and ten, the, after the first ten days of school, it starts all over again. Is that what, that's what you want to do, right?
That's what they're willing to do.
Oh, okay.
I'm willing to do it in a year.
You wanna do it by the year?
Three sixty-five.
A three hundred six, you're saying a three hundred sixty-five calendar.
Yeah, he's talking to calendar, not school year.
Where Randy's talking about seven hundred.
Like, if you get caught ten days in school, and we catch you, you're getting your eleven-day suspension, and it's August the first. And if you get caught sometime between August the first, before the next year, you slide to your second offense. Then if you make it all the way through and don't get it, then it's off, and if you get caught September of next year, go back to first offense. Instead of going two years. I think two years you'll forget about it.
They won't forget it either.
What can I ask you, uh, Mr. Man, if you care, why would you vote?
I do it just like I do a suspension for a firearm or, or drugs, we always do a three sixty-five, because that's the most simple to keep up with, simple to keep up with. You're gonna get eleven, you're gonna get first offense, it's gonna get you eleven days, and if you stay clean within three sixty-five after that date, you can fly, slide back to first offense, but if you get caught within that, you go to your second offense.
A specific number of days would be easier probably on your administrators, cause they could go from date X to date Y and know them. And it's no different, I mean, if you look at your DUI laws, you get a DUI first, you've got ten years, and if you don't get another one, it's still a DUI first, if you get another one, it's a second, third, and it could go on, so it's, it's no different than something like that. But you probably are better off, instead of trying to navigate school years and that type of thing, is to have just a set number of days. If you wanna do something like that.
Is everybody comfortable with the last part of that sentence where the, uh, we talked about suspension of blank number of days from the first offense and blank number of days for any second or subsequent offenses? What if you got a second and a third, just back to back here?
Third, he deals with.
Don't you think it needs to, get upgraded pretty quick? I mean, we're, we're basically saying the same thing for any second or subsequent offenses. Should not the third be of greater magnitude than the second?
You could do that, the way I've gotten it written now is, if you gave them thirty for the second, then they got a third, that's another third, they got a fourth, that's another third. And it just goes on with that third.
And then.
But keeping in mind thirty days.
You should change that schedule.
It's pretty well gonna wind them up, if we actually put them on school for thirty days, that winds them up, they gonna fail pretty well, that's just it.
That's true.
They gonna have to take that year over again. Does anybody understands that? Okay. We can amend this by, and say this, if everybody's happy with eleven days and thirty days, and three sixty-five.
Now, you're saying a probationary period to three sixty-five, so you're.
From, from the first offense. Now. Negative, positive, I mean.
I left ten years.
Okay.
I, I still think it is longer than three sixty-five.
Yeah, it'd be two.
Three sixty-five, they don't learn anything, and you can get caught once every year in high school, and only eleven days for four times. What happens when somebody overdoses?
Is that something that we can revisit, Mr. Sholgers?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna do it now. We're gonna, Lord, we can't revisit. Once we do this, yeah, it can be redone, but I think we'd be, we'd be losing the faith of the board. And it would be sending a message to them that, well, hey, you know, they've decided they're gonna do something different here.
So we just would amend it if we seen that what we said was too lenient, and then we decide we wanna come back and make it more strict.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, I, but I don't see going backwards.
That's what I was asking.
I don't see going backwards, I'm saying going forward, making it worse than what it is now, but not latest.
Yeah, right.
Right. So, uh.
And then I'm, I'm also on this, you know, it's talked about the first offense and the second offense, but it says nothing about a third.
I, I just took where it says subsequent offenses to maintain.
Thirty days every time?
The way it's written right now, but you can sure change it. But it's gotta stop somewhere, bro.
That's the reason I asked everybody comfortable with that last part of that, but it's subsequent, it doesn't define, it says subsequent offenses, how long does it take?
Well, thirty is pretty well gonna get them in.
I mean, thirty again.
Get them in, there's no reason for them to come back.
Are they allowed alternative schooling?
Oh, but they, they would, they would, they'll come back, and then they'll get caught again.
The shelters?
Yes.
Are they gonna be allowed alternative schooling during this?
If they appeal it, they appeal it, the student disciplinary hearing authority can, they can increase it, they can decrease it, or they can uphold it. And then after that, it goes to the director, and he has the discretion to do the same, and he can mod, he can remand them to the alternative school under his discretion by state law.
But it come, doesn't come back to us. As, as the old saying is, he's wanna get paid to help you deal with it.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Attorney, for clarity?
Yes.
Uh, after this second or subsequent offenses.
Yes.
What we're talking about is, that instantaneously wraps to the director. Now, i- if that's accurate, and he sees that this individual is a repetitive problem, he can, three sixty-five again right on, three sixty-five again right on the spot.
He can modify it, yes, he has the discretion to do.
He has the discretion to deal with it.
So after, on the third offense?
He deals with it, and he can, where the fee says it for getting rid of the third, are he or she or?
But, but while I see both sides, I do think by the time somebody's done it for sure three times, they're, they're choosing their path.
Right, right.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying, you got.
And it, and it's most likely he's gonna do a three sixty-five, it's not necessarily, he's going to, but he, most likely will.
And whether it's a third offense or an eighth offense, if they appeal it, it ends up on his desk.
Right.
Most likely.
And could be increased, decreased, or say the same.
Correct. Correct. But the board could certainly add a third offense, I don't know that I would go much more than that, cause he'll just keep.
Okay. Obviously, we got mixed emotions on the three sixty-five versus the two years, so this is what I'm gonna do, we're gonna, if the one that made the motion and the one that seconded it will amend their emotion to say eleven days on first offense and thirty on the second, we'll vote on that. Then we're gonna turn around, we're gonna vote on a three sixty-five or two year.
We can do that. I made the motion, so I'm gonna make the motion that we change that to eleven days and thirty days.
Okay, second it.
Can you, anything I, Joe, will be there with?
You amend that motion?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussions? All in favor? Oh, yeah, just a moment. Joe.
No, I just, the, Mr. Smith, we're gonna be the one to have to deal with this, what, I wanna know what he thinks.
Okay.
I mean.
Well, I think we've gotta send a message, I, I don't think there's any doubt about that. I, Jamie talked to me after the last meeting, I think, and made a point about jaywalking, and, you know, I think he said you can't give a death penalty for jaywalking, I think was a, you know, it has to meet the crime, but I'd also think, like Mr. Glover even says, you know, we gotta, they're making a choice, I mean, the first time, you know, you can see it getting accidentally in a backpacker, you can see, but after you give them a choice after second, third time, I don't have a problem dealing with it, I, I can handle it, I mean, uh, I, I think this is a very fair.
Yeah, but which way do you want us to go?
I think this is very fair, what you're doing right here. The eleven thirty, and then with the ideal, you know, and if anything, it's, it's, second time's pretty, and this is giving them a choice. You two both expressed, you know, after the last meeting, you'd hate to see somebody fail, you know? They're not gonna fail on this right here, if they choose to go to accident pregnancy, their grades go up. If we don't get to the point where we got enough housing, but I think a lot of it's reputation, or maybe a lot of it's coming from the same places. If we can catch those places where it's been distributed, I think you'll see those numbers follow drastically.
And last time I'll say it, but please remember, if they're caught with one, and it tests for an illegal drug or a substance, that is zero, zero tolerance.
Well, I, I like, a couple things I'd like to add, one, I wa, I wanna purchase the test, so I get, Tucker gets caught with one, he's gonna immediately be tested, does that need to be in policy?
No.
Okay.
And they test that.
And then that's a three sixty-five itself, if he tests with something in it, that's three, that, I guess, that's two offenses in there.
Who's gonna be delivering those tests? Are the principals doing the tests?
Well, we're prob, probably gonna get to school nurses to mentor them, just so it gets a little higher level of privacy. But, but that would only be an indicator at that point, what we discussed, that we would probably send them on.
Well, no, sir, I think you've got, I don't think you can test the student in their body, you can't do that. You've got to test the substance you find in the bag.
Okay, and that's the thing, we've gotta clear it for our faculty.
Right, you've got to test the substance.
I, I, I just wanted to make sure that, 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 that was a good idea, I was gonna suggest that our nurse test those, because what happens whenever somebody tests those, touches the substance, and they're overdosed, and that's happened.
That's why we'd like to do it with a certified personnel.
Correct.
But Mr. Smith, you have a drug testing policy for students with a different criteria for punishment.
And that's the thing, we gotta get educated, and then the second question I'd like to ask the board, you know, I know you're gonna say as soon as possible, but we need to look at a realistic time, you'd like to see us start this if you voted in.
What you feel comfortable with?
Well, I think we've gotta have time, we got a principal meeting on Thursday, I gotta get with Jamie, just like, I hadn't thought about some of that stuff.
We're about, we're about the day after spring break.
I, I think that's real, is that.
That would be fine, there's two, two considerations. One, most of your policies require two readings. You can pass this under that one point six hundred on a first reading, probably, if you choose to do that, you need to amend your motion to include that. And then secondly, you could put an effective date as to when it would take effect. And I don't know what date that is after spring break.
I don't know what date that is.
Otherwise, you gotta come back and do this next month, but you could pass it under that one point six hundred.
And I want you to understand, we wanna get some people to come in some, outside the school system if possible, and do some talking to the faculty and the, and the students both, and then maybe get them all sign off on it, they understood it, and it just enhances the level of expectations from them.
And I'd like to change my motion to amend what Mr. Winkler stated.
And the effective date be April the third, which is the first day back from spring break.
This, this also don't, this policy don't stop the students, now, y'all. This is teachers, administrators, and resource officers.
Yes.
Yeah, it covers the whole.
It should. Yeah, well, we're talking about students.
Yeah, but it covers everybody.
Those are the other ones, also like their bacon, their collars, or whatever they connect.
I don't, I don't wanna say on the school property, I don't have any, there aren't any bodies.
They didn't understand that.
Well, the, their teachers were following their, their, their discipline policy, you can't suspend them for those days, you'd have to break charges on them.
Oh, yeah, because it says they're any student, if it does.
Okay, Joe.
I changed my motion to add Mr. Winkler's language, so.
And, and effective April the third.
The effective date, so it's, so maybe he needs to second that.
Joe, you wanna change your motion to read this, what you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Everybody understand that?
Yes.
We're not voting on the time limit, we gonna do that just a minute, we're voting on, I'm talking about the time limit, we either gonna do three sixty-five or two year, one year or two year, we gonna do that next, we're just voting on this right here now. Okay, we got a motion in second. We're not spending money, but I'm gonna go into a roll call, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
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 And myself, yes.
Things all electronically, too?
Yes, yes, please, please. Now, uh, this next motion is gonna be, if you, we're gonna vote it at three sixty, one year, if you agree to that, you're gonna say yes. If you don't agree to that, you're gonna say no, and then it's gonna fail, and we'll go to the next motion, which will do two years. Now, does everybody understand that?
Do we need an official motion?
Yes, sir.
And we'll make a.
I'll make official motion that we vote on a three sixty-five.
Three sixty, okay. Do I have a second? Mr. Apple. Any more discussions?
Just explain to that, just to clarify the difference on three sixty-five and a two-year for me.
Okay. If you vote for the three sixty, okay, we fixing to vote, we got a motion and a second to do three sixty-five. So if it passes, we're gonna do three sixty-five, but if it fails, we'll do two years.
As a punishment after.
No, no, sir, not a punishment, yes, the time, if you get your first offense, then if you get another one within three hundred and sixty-five days under this motion, that's a second. If it fails.
If you want to go.
If it's a first offense, and you get enough, and if somebody makes a motion, and you get another one within seven hundred and whatever two years is, then that's a second offense, it's the time that when you're first and second with.
Still wiping it clean, let's say I got caught in March as a freshman. The way we do it now, you start over as a sophomore, like smoking or fighting. The proposal would be either one year or two year, it'd be my sophomore year or my junior year before I call probation, baby.
Which one would be that one, the three sixty-five one?
Either one. It depends on whether it's one-year probation or two-year probation.
Oh, wow, and what does it say, if you vote yes?
If you vote yes, you're voting to do it for one year, if you vote yes. If you vote no, you're voting for two years.
Seven hundred and thirty days.
Right. Then, if the yeses, if we get enough yeses, it's approved, but if we don't, it fails, then you got two years.
Well, somebody had to make the motion.
Well, okay, you'll make a motion, it'll be two years. So, everybody understands?
That's complicated.
We got a motion, and we got a second to do one year.
I've done, you guys who made the motion the same.
I made the mo, motion.
Thanks, sir.
And Mr. Apple.
I appreciate it.
Second though. And I'm gonna do a roll call again.
But it's not gonna be do, is it gonna be electronic again, yep?
Electronic, and you're also gonna be roll calling. Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Apple.
No.
Mr. McCallum.
Yes.
Bell, Joe. Yes, it's me.
Absolutely, no.
Yes. And everybody next to vote. I mean, you got.
I, I heard three notes, I think, but there's only two.
We voted electronically, we could have two.
There was.
I was a yes.
I was a yes.
Yes, yes.
No.
Got two no's.
Two no's.
Two no's, and everybody else was a yes. So the motion passed, since we're gonna do one year.
Now, we said we're.
Five guesses.
Yes, sir.
They had five guesses.
Yes, sir. My guesses, two no's.
Is that what it is?
Takes five.
You're gonna tell them all?
I'm just. Okay, the next item on the agenda is permission to advertise request for approval of construction manager for wellness centers. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say, and I'm horrified.
Okay, now, do I have discussion?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
I thought we hired a architect, fun, a architect group over.
We, we, we did hire one to draw some plans and stuff, we feel like we can, can do some stuff differently, and cause maybe, maybe more financially beneficial for the school system.
Mr. Man, this would be request for proposals to advertise, so it would come back to the board.
It wouldn't be.
This is just to see.
See if someone is interested in being the construction manager.
They're not voting to do it.
No.
You probably have some more information on that, if that.
I hope to have you at Norman, I talked today, and actually, she texted me after we got in here, tell me she gets some more stuff back from one of her firms. But I was gonna talk about that, Mr. Glover asked me to update you on, I'll do that one time for every second, but, uh, thank you.
Okay, uh, we have a motion.
I say.
And we got a second from Mr. Lewis. Now, any more discussions? If not, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Apple.
Yes.
Mr. McCallum. Mr. McCallum?
Yes.
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 I vote yes. Any discussions, I have nothing on the list of this question, which?
Glover asked the slate to, uh, to talk a little bit, we hope that the bids are going on the cafeteria, she just told you at the end that this month, which bid.
End of March, uh, they'll be accepting the bid.
And it'll take about ninety days, once, once the bid start, we've got a bus, we're renovating, we want to bust the lot, she's over from the high school, we're gonna cut the step, we think we got a really good plan, finish the year out. That whole thing will pretty much be shut off, there won't be any access from the, from the actual, from into the cafeteria, because there'll be a lot of construction going on, and all that back and back, taking all that equipment out. Mr. Sholgers was there that day when the architects and engineers was both there, uh, but, uh, we think it'll move it pretty quick once it starts, it'll be nice, but, uh.
Where will the children, where will the children eat during that day?
Where will they eat, they'll still eat in the cafeteria, the.
They'll, they'll petition it. They'll kind of petition it off.
Yeah, they'll petition it off, where they can't get back, where the construction's going on.
And they'll still be able to lead in that area. Any, anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
It's open discussion, right?
Yes.
I just wanna say one thing, that's, uh, this policy that we just re-said, I, well, I know that's a lot of back and forth, but I was gonna say to the board members. Um, how much I appreciate y'all, and your passion on that, Mr. Glover's passion on it, at the end of the day, all of us want to say the same thing, we want our children, good education, be safe, and we don't want that in our school system. There was a lot of back and forth, but during all that, you know, I was sitting here listening to it, and that just shows me how much my counterparts care, and how much it matters, about what those on our school system, all y'all know, and, uh, thank you for that.
I've got one question, and.
Yes, sir.
About that, and I just thought, and this is probably nothing, but, Mr. Winkler, if a student from another county transferred, can he transfer here if he's had the same trouble? Size he's gonna go to another system, was that, was that following him here?
Well, the violation could follow him, we don't accept, you don't have to accept, and we don't accept students that are expelled or suspended.
We don't have to?
We don't, that, a student has to be living in this county. For us to, that was dealt with years ago, if they don't live in this county, they don't go school in this county.
I'm just.
But because that has happened in the past.
And they're suspended from another system.
That's what I'm getting at, even if decided they could buy a house to move here to go finish the school year out, and could they, they would not have to be accepted, right?
That used to happen a lot, I think it did. They would, like, have the means, if he was in trouble, you'd move to another system, and then they go right in, they come back, but now, it follows you, we got their records and drillings, zero tolerance, comes here.
Yeah.
That's good.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna bring it up tonight, cause I don't wanna drag this meeting out, can I retreat next month?
Yes, sir.
I would like to have a little session, uh, some time later to talk about our board meetings, how they're handled with our new systems and stuff.
Yes, sir.
And let's, let's discuss that maybe in our retreat, sometimes talk about a thirty minute law or something.
Okay.
There's, there's some things I like, and I'll tell you there's some things I don't like.
Okay, sure, absolutely.
And I'd like to add in our alcohol policy, I'd like to have it brought up.
Now, shh.
And, and alcohol, alcohol and tobacco, I'd like to.
I think, I think we can still add some topics with the committee, they're wanting us to have topics like this.
He said today he would. Yeah.
He is.
Yes, he, yeah, Ben?
He'd be a good.
Ben will be the one coming, and he is, so he can answer exactly how it's gonna be. Twenty, have any questions?
What's the date on the retreat?
Okay, the retreat is on the March, the twenty first.
March twenty first.
It start at nine o'clock and be over at four, and then our board meeting, you'll have about an hour off, and then you got a board meeting that will start at five.
I think you're at eight o'clock that day.
No, sir, nine o'clock, nine to four. Now, do we have, Mr. Winkler, we have executive, we don't have no executive session. Uh, if nobody has anything else to discuss, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Someone.
Say. All is voted.
I.
Vote.
These are coming up on the screen.
Sure.
We can say.
Okay.
You got it?
Yes.